Good evening, and welcome to the October 1st meeting of the Governing Body. I call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Councilman Miller, who will provide the invocation, stand as you are able, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Dear fellow residents of Topeka, as I stand or sit before you today, I'm filled with hope and determination to address the critical issues facing our beloved city. I say beloved because it is a city that I love. This is the city I'm honored to be born in. This is a city that we all have the moment in time to share together. It's pretty amazing to think about the advantages that we currently have being alive together in 2024. Of all the differences we have, which when it all boils down is very few, it's important to take a moment and think about the opportunity we have to find common ground, respect one's ability to live their life in a way that doesn't hurt others. And it is together that we can overcome the challenges of economic development, public safety, and cost of living. Let us work hand in hand to create a brighter future for all Topequians. With your support and collaboration, community, I am confident that we can build a stronger, more prosperous Topeka for generations to come. Thank you for entrusting us with this responsibility, as we do not take it lightly. And we look forward to continuing our efforts and working together for the betterment of our community. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands when we stand, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilman, for your words. Okay, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmember Siller.
Here.
I'm sorry, I need to start with Mayor Padilla.
It's all right.
Here, Hiller's here. Baldvija Akala, Ortiz.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Cal.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Yes.
And Hofer.
Here.
We have nine present.
Thank you. Move on to Agenda Item Number Two, the Presentations. Madam Clerk?
The presentation this evening is on the lead and copper rule revisions, and Sylvia Davis, our Utilities Director, will be presenting.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Governing Body. Sylvia Davis, our Director of Utilities, will lead us to this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Governing Body. So back in February, we came before you to explain the proposed improvements to the EPA's lead and copper rule, including the requirement that by October 16th of this year, we needed to have a publicly accessible inventory available to all of our citizens, customers, the public. So tonight, I want to give you a quick update. Our Utilities Team, in conjunction with our consultants and our technical support group here at the city, have been working really diligently to complete this inventory in preparation of this deadline. They've been working on a soon-to-be public portal and gathering everything we need to submit to KDHE by the 16th. So I'm going to just dive right into this portal for you all. This, again, is not live yet to the public, but it soon will be. This is the back end. This is kind of what we see, and the public portal will look very similar. It might just be dressed up a little bit and with some additional instruction on it. So if I can turn this on and find the mouse, I might just have... Oh, there it is. So once in the portal, and we will have a link to this on our city website where all of our lead and copper information is currently housed, once in this portal or dashboard, anybody that chooses to go in there can either... There's a search tool. I think this is covering it up. There's a search tool. You can go in and type in a specific address, or you can just click on a link that you pan to, an address that you might be panning to. So this is pretty small. I'll try to zoom in here for you. The green dots that you see represent addresses where we know what the material of that service line is. There are blue dots in several locations that represent the remainder of our unknown service lines. We also have some red lines that you will see and a few yellow or golden lines. The red lines indicate fire lines. Even though nobody drinks or consumes water off of a fire line, we're still required to include that on this public dashboard. The yellow lines indicate service lines that attach to fire hydrants. So again, not something people normally drink out of, but this information will be included on that portal. Once here, you can click on a dot, and it will link over to this area. I don't know if I can zoom in here, perhaps. I'm trying to get this blown up for you guys. Anyway, regardless, once you're in this portal and you click on those links, you will get information for this address. It will include what that service line material is made out of. So if I can squint really hard, or Councilman Cal, maybe you could tell me what this says right here.
Copper. Copper 3, 1983.
Perfect, thank you. So that says city side, and then on the customer side, it also says copper, correct?
Yes.
Okay. You will also be able to access, if you click these links right here, this is the original meter card for that address, and so you can see exactly where that meter is, the size of the water main that it stems off from, where it's at in proximity to the building, and lots of other fun information. You can also usually see a drawing of the location, the building that this is servicing, where the main is, and it's just a general layout. So this is all the information that we've had on file for decades. The city should be extremely proud of it. I said that last time I was in front of you. The city has had really great records. We have a great system that has captured a lot of information over the last many decades, and that's what we have used to continuously update our systems and then this portal. So again, out of... We have 57, approximately 57,000 service lines, and all of that information that we had has gone into this public portal. There will be a disclaimer on it that says, "We don't guarantee this to 100% accuracy," but that's our goal. And then as we go through these unknowns and as we continue down the future, we will continue to replace meters, we will continue to work on water mains, and continue to get information from our customers as we go to update this portal. And soon, hopefully, we will have 100%. In the last six months, though, I want to shout out to our staff, they've been able to reduce the number of unknown material services from more than 8,500 down to approximately 2,800. So they've really done a lot of investigating, working with customers who have called in and really tried to identify what we have out in the system. So while we can't claim 100% complete inventory, I am really proud of the fact that we can say we have 99% of the city side identified and 95% of the customer side identified. So it's very impressive. So what's next for the city of Topeka? Following the submission of our inventory, it'll be a big Excel spreadsheet to KDHE. We will input all that information before or on the 16th of October, and then we have 30 days to send out notifications to everyone that is either on an unknown line or a known lead line or a galvanized requiring replacement line. So those are the three major materials or unknowns that we have identified. That's approximately 4,000 customers, 230 known lead service lines, 940 galvanized requiring replacement, and then again, 2,800 unknown service lines. We will be mailing these... This is a required flyer that we will have to send out to them. This communication is sent out by KDHE saying to be standard all across the state, they want us to use this particular trifold. It includes our information in terms of who they can get ahold of and how they can reach out for questions and to help update as we move forward. They will... It also includes KDHE information and what the material that we have on file for them is. 30 days we have to reach out to these folks. We have to make a very concentrated effort and certify that we have reached out to all of the customers on file, not necessarily the owner. So who is on file for having water use at that location? And then we're going to go ahead and start implementing our plan to provide what has been a best practice or a heavily suggested practice of supplying filters or water pitchers to those customers that have known lead lines or unknown lines. If the ruling, if the federal ruling does go into effect as it has been written, water suppliers have three years to do that, but because it is a standard practice and we don't want to post, "Hey, guess what? You have a lead line. Good luck with that," we are going ahead and procuring pitchers and water filters, and we are working on a policy of how we're going to hand those out and get those into customers' hands, and then we will have to continuously do that. If it's a rental and we have people moving in and out every time we have a new customer there, we will be required annually to send these notices out as well until those lines are all replaced. In addition to that, we will be coming in front of the Public Infrastructure Committee on October 15th to discuss our lead service line project and a replacement plan for the water lines in the system. We're really excited to announce that we were successful in being pre-approved for an SRF loan from the state, providing up to 50% forgiveness. I should say 50% forgiveness up to $74 million. So that's a huge plus. It doesn't mean that we have half of that in the bank right now to dedicate to this, but we are looking and wanting to make some adjustments to our CIP, and that's what we will explain on the 15th. So with all of that, I will stand for any questions you might have.
Councilman Cal?
Are there any, like, streets or neighborhoods that you know are needing replaced right now?
I would say the answer would be no, simply because the water mains themselves are healthy in good shape, but if you have... Once you'll see the map, you can see there are some locations where we might have more unknowns. There's not a huge concentration of lead lines out there. They're pretty sporadic, so we haven't really dove into where the main focus is of that would be yet, so I can't tell you in this neighborhood or that neighborhood quite yet.
Okay. I was just trying to think if we need to, like, part of our water line replacement program, look at those areas as places, if they're, you know, maybe five years down the line, moving them up to kind of getting into compliance better?
Absolutely, and that's the next step. As we look at this funding and what we have already built into the CIP, we will have to make some decisions and work with you all to help define what we want to do. Do we want to spend dollars to replace private service lines or just the city side of that service line? And those are all discussions that we need to have.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, great job on getting this done. I mean, this is... I know this is a... Was a huge project to undertake, so you and your team, Sylvia, you've done a fantastic job meeting the deadline, and I don't know that any of us understand how much work went into this. Quick question. Any ballpark guesses on what the ultimate, without the KDHE part of it, what's the ultimate cost to the city of Topeka? And then a comment after that.
Sure, sure. That's where that $74 million number came from. If we were to replace, at the time when that, when we put the request in, what it would cost for every service line that was unknown at the time, or known lead or galvanized requiring replacement, to do all of that, $74 million?
So safe to say somewhere between $50 and $100 million when it's all said and done.
Yes.
I mean, this is a great example of a mostly unfunded federal mandate. These rules were written, and for good reason. I mean, nobody can argue that we shouldn't be getting rid of lead in particular, but both lead and copper. But then it comes to the cities to ultimately fund them, and thank goodness for KDHE and their ability, and those are federal funds that filter through. But ultimately, we're responsible for probably somewhere between $20 and $50 million, $25 and $50 million. And, you know, every two, three years when we do rate increases, we talk about these things. It's not just the cost of treating water and getting water to your house. It is a lot of things like this. This is on the water side, and we have a ton of things on the wastewater side that are just rules that we have to follow in order to run our business, and it costs a lot of money. So, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. And if I were to ask, have an ask of any of you, it's really just to help us spread the word. The more of those unknowns that we can account for, the less money we might have to spend if we can ensure and identify that they are not lead or galvanized requiring replacement.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. You lost me there at the end on understanding exactly the money. That is loan money or grant money that would be available and just for the city's lines? Or is there any money available for customers?
So that money is... The way we wrote our proposal was $74 million to replace all of the service lines with an estimation of $8,000 per service line. So that would entail everything from the main to the residence itself, to where it enters the building. No private plumbing or anything like that.
And that's 100% of that expected cost?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and we might be able to get that all?
Of the amount that we had at the time, which, like I said, over the last six months, we've greatly reduced the number of unknowns, so that is less now, and hopefully, we can continue to knock that down. But we want to plan for worst-case scenario, and then, like I said, it'll really be up to us for discussion. None of those rules have been finalized in terms of, do we have to provide that service to every customer within the next 10 years that is proposed? But we don't know what that might look like in the end.
And if I'm tracking that, if it is, they would provide the money to do it. We would just have to get it done.
They would provide... We would do it. We would spend our money, and we would get 50% forgiveness of those loans.
Well, that's why, because I would ask if first if it was...
It is SRF loan.
Those are loans?
Yes, correct.
Hmm, okay.
Yep. So that's why we really need to have the push to get as many of these identified as possible.
And then for the people's lines, once the service hits the house, that's on them. We'll just be letting them know or feeding their information back to them?
Yes. The city could decide, "We're only replacing the city side of that service line up to the meter box."
Right.
And then it's on them outside of the meter box to their... To the building. Or we could say, "We'll do all of it and try to work through all of those owners and making that happen." But again, those are things that we have not decided, but we planned for when we were looking at potential funding options, and we continue to look for dollars. Hopefully, we can get some free money out there that we don't have to pay back, but right now, this is what... We're considering this a win, for sure.
Okay, and thank you again. I echo Councilman Dobler's kudos. That's a huge task that you all took on.
Staff, all kudos to them. They've really put in a lot of man-hours.
Further comment or questions for the Director? Anybody online?
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll move on now to Agenda Item Number Three, the Consent Agenda. Madam Clerk?
Three As minutes of the regular meeting of September 17, 2024, and there are no applications.
Okay. Motion to approve. Motion to approve by Councilman Cal, second by Councilman Miller. You'll call the roll, please.
Okay, Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Siller?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Hofer?
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Motion being carried, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Action Items. Madam Clerk?
As, Appeal submitted by Shirley Reed for denial of private security guard license.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Governing Body. Major Russ Clomp, Topeka Police Department, can stand for any questions that we may have.
Mayor, City Manager, Governing Body. I would stand for any questions you might have. I've had the opportunity to review the documentation the interim Chief Holtham used in his decision to deny this request, the main point being the conviction for a violent crime in 2017. Ms. Reed was convicted of misdemeanor case of battery. And according to the regulations, that would qualify for denial at that point.
City Attorney?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, too, that the only issue before you on the appeal is whether or not the facts support the approval or the disapproval by the chief. So you aren't weighing anything other than, do the facts support why it was denied?
Okay. Any questions for the Governing Body? Is there a motion?
I got questions.
Councilman Duncan?
I know this is tough because you didn't make this decision, and I understand why the chief is not here, not his fault, and so hopefully that all works out. So I don't know, I guess, I don't know if you can answer some of these questions or not. First of all, do you know how many of these we deny on a regular basis?
I do not.
This is the first appeal I've had in five years.
Yeah, I'm not involved in that process. I can tell you that this is the first appeal I've heard of as well.
I know the appeal had to be requested within 10 days. Do we have a specific amount of time we have to take action on it? I mean, if we need some further information when the chief's available to provide some of that? I'm going to ask some other questions. I'm just throwing that at you while I...
In reviewing the ordinance, it does not give a time. You will need to give a definitive answer in the reasonable amount of future. I do believe the applicant is also here to speak as well.
That's fine. In Kansas, misdemeanor battery, what... I mean, I know we have some misdemeanors that are not felonies but treated as such, but where does misdemeanor battery fall? And I'll tell you, I've been looking at the definition of misdemeanor, and I'm not trying to split hairs here, but I am trying to look at our own... And as you look at the definition of misdemeanor battery, it doesn't really use the same words we've used in our code to dismiss, to reject this. And so that's part of my concern. I have a few other questions, but I mean, that... So I don't know if you even here can answer that, but...
Our code is pretty vague. It does not define what a crime of violence is, dishonesty or fraud, use of a firearm or controlled substance. So that would be determined to the Governing Body, and I think that's why there's probably a right to appeal.
Do we do additional background checks beyond... I mean, this popped up, obviously, in some kind of background check. So in this applicant's case, is there anything else? Was there any other disqualifying convictions, criminal acts that came up in that search besides this one?
So the search that was done by our records department that does the initial background history when we have an application like this, provided a criminal history background. And from that criminal history, which lists out all the crimes and convictions in one document, we went back to the 10-year mark as required by ordinance, and this crime listed within those was within that 10-year period, and that's what triggered the denial at that point. I have reviewed... I did retrieve the Wichita police reports, and I've reviewed those as well. And, you know, the crime of conviction was not the crime of charge, if that makes sense. She was actually charged with a higher crime, and it was reduced for conviction.
Well, actually, I did notice that because that was sent to us, and that was my next question. Mike, and again, I know the chief's not here. If we look, if we... The chief, if we looked at the charge versus the conviction, right? And so again, I know you can't answer that, but these are some of my... I guess where I'm struggling with this one is, and why if we could need to put it off a week or to discuss, is because, and this has been issued at the state, at what point is something a mistake, and someone deserves the right in that one mistake, even seven years later, to continue living their life and having those opportunities versus the criminal act that should absolutely disqualify you from ever working in a specific field? And I know that's a tough balance, especially in this case, because this person will have interaction with the public in a security-related field having this, but I also think it's fair to look at the history of this individual as it relates to that and sort of what they were actually charged with, which is probably why our code says "may" not "shall," so that there is some leeway. So I'm very honest, we haven't had a lot of time to review this, so I'm very conflicted about it. The only other question I have, and I don't know if you can answer this, maybe, is, do we know if this individual is trying to get this license to get a job or has an employer who is ready to hire this individual if they are granted this license? Do we know the answer to that?
Councilman Miller?
I'm sorry, to that point, I would like to make a motion to allow Ms. Reed to be able to publicly give her appeal if that is something that we're allowed to do. I think if, to have some of those answers to that, those questions, which I have as well, I think it's right for her to be able to say her piece if we, as a city, through the TPD, are denying her ability to be able to get this license.
Before you make that motion, can you...
That was my last question, so if you can answer Ms. Reed.
Could you answer Councilman Duncan's question?
Could you repeat the question?
Do we know, and I don't know if this is on the application, and again, Ms. Reed can come up and answer, but when this application was made, does this individual have an employer ready to hire if this is granted, or is it getting it so they can go look for work in this field?
That is not known to me.
Okay. Yeah. Question, answer. Great.
And a motion is not needed for that. Ms. Reed can come up and talk without a motion.
Would you, yeah, come to the podium so we can hear you, and if you, identify yourself, please.
I'm Shirley Reed. This right here, I got each and every one of you guys... I'm Shirley Reed. I've been in Topeka. I came here for a job. Please, everyone, take one of those. I came here for a job. I've been working in security for the last seven years. Just hold on, because I did take some notes, because this is not what it takes.
Thank you.
So I did come here for a job. I worked in... Well, I was offered two jobs, one at the prison, and I'm now working at the Topeka Health and Human Services as a security guard. Well, I've been here, this is going on my second week, so let's get back to this charge, which... I'm just a little nervous, just hold on. I'm at home, I'm asleep. I hear a noise. I go to the back door, I hear something in the basement. I go down in the basement, I see a shadow, and as I turned to run, that man got hit. I ran on upstairs, he ran out the back door, and I told my brother, I told my brother what happened. Well, that, you don't know what he said. But anyway, at the time, I didn't know that this was a robbery, that he had took stuff out. So we just locked the back door up, you know, because I didn't notice anything at that time. So in about two hours, I get a knock at the door. Who is it? And they said, "The police." So I opened up the door, and they said, "Ms. Reed, we want you, we want to go down in your basement." And when I went, when we went down in the basement, there was a spot of blood, you know, from... Because I had a coffee cup in my hand, and, you know, but anyway. So after that, he just told me to turn around, and that's what I did. At the time, I... That's what I did. So anyway, they kept me for like 20... I think they kept me in like 24 hours, and then they, oh, they just let me go. And when I got back home, that's when the neighbors told me. Well, we thought that, because I... The neighbors was telling me, "Well, we just thought it was, you know..." Because I had a basement, and there was a recovery center across the street. So I always open my doors to different people, just like him and the homeless people. And so the neighbors didn't, they didn't know. They didn't know. So that gave me the... I went downstairs and started looking around and noticing all the stuff that was missing. I had renters insurance. You will see a letter from... from Shelter's Insurance Company. I went far and near to find this woman. In fact, the day that I was relieved of my duties, they came to me, I mean, and told me, you know, you can't work here. Now, I got a badge on right here. I've worked with President Bush, I've worked with the Dallas Cowboys, Shotah Station. None of this ever came up. But I'm not, I'm just asking that you allow me to go back to resume my duties. But it's a good thing, because now I can get to the bottom and get this off my record. What else I need to tell you? And you, in your statement in there, you will see, the first top is mine, the second top is the Shelter's Insurance, Deanna Polly, which was my agency at the time, who, remember that. I have, and I know it's a God thing, because you know what? That lady retired. And I just happened to call, and she answered the door. And when I told her what happened to me, she said, "Oh, yeah, I remember that." Everybody used to laugh at me about the burglar that I beat up. That's what, that's what, they thought it was kind of like a joke. So you will still, statement from there. The other statement is, I worked for a city councilman in Dallas, Texas, Abdul Khabir. His wife, I took care of his mother, on top of doing security at the state. That's the other statement. What else I want to tell you? So they ordered me out, but then, you know, they came back and picked me up again. During that time, I was working for George Trumbull and Willard Garvey in Wichita, Kansas. I took care of George's wife. And she had Alzheimer's. We seemed to couldn't get nobody to be there with her. You know, she had Alzheimer's. So she would worry some, it was hard to keep staff, put it that way. So not knowing any about, you know, that this would be on my record or nut stuff like that, I just took a plea. George and Willard had a meeting, and it wasn't fair to her to keep dragging her down there, because at the time, I was the only caregiver. So I, yes, I took a plea, not knowing that it would come back and hurt me someday. So I'm asking you to allow me to continue do what I'm trained to do. I mean, this, down there, I even got certifications where I literally took the class, went in the gun range, you know what I'm saying? And even the psych evaluation. So this, I'm not, no disrespect to you, but it's all wrong. I hit, I turned out of scarness. If y'all anybody knew about the BTK Strangler, that's where he was always. He'd come in the basement. The first thing came in my mind. And thank God that I had a dog that alerted me, or he would have wiped me out. Ain't no telling what would have happened when my brother went home. But he didn't stop there. He didn't stop there. He went and flagged the car down. The neighbors watched him come back and get my things. And then he robbed that man as well. And then the, I forgive him, because it did scare me. But even when he got out of prison, he called me and asked me to forgive him. He said, "Ms. Shirley..." And, you know, at the time, I didn't know who he was, but I knew him. It was somebody that knew me, that had all that stuff on. And so that's what happened. And I'm asking you to allow me to, because I gave up everything I got to come to Dallas. If I show you the, just to move, I mean, to come to Topeka, everything, you know. I wanted to come here because it's smaller, it's cheaper, more family atmosphere. You know, doing what I do in Dallas can be dangerous, can be dangerous. But I'm going to keep doing it until the day I die, because that's what God wants me to do. So I'm just asking you to allow me to go back to my job. You know, I'm not going to worry about whatever decision you give me, it's okay, because he's got another job for me to do. But the sad thing about it, I was taken off my job, and I'll lose everything. How will I get back to Dallas? I'll be one of the homeless people, because I've spent everything to move to Topeka, because you had so many benefits for a disabled person like me. So I'm just asking you to allow me to continue to do what I do. I want my badge. This is from Antifran Security Company. We do anywhere from the Texas Rangers to the Cowboys. I'm not going to rehearse no more. I'm going to sit down. So I just hope you do the right thing and allow me to go back to work. Allow me to get my guard card. I think I deserve it. And I've taken the class. And this right here, if he wouldn't have been hurt, he'd have never, he'd have never went to the hospital. So that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
And if I was aggressive, I'm sorry, but this is a hurting thing. I came too far to have something yanked out of me, because somebody want to make, you know, just like, and I got rheumatoid arthritis. And I get up every day. Every day I can get up and I can go to work, I'm going to keep going. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Miller, and then Councilman Duncan.
Ms. Reed, would you mind staying up here for a second? I know you were nervous. It's okay. I'm proud of you for what you stood up and said. It takes a lot to talk about a history like that, and I want you to know that. I have a couple of questions for you. All right. The position that you were going for, that you were in, does it require you to carry a weapon?
No, it does not. But I am a level three. I've even got a psych evaluation as well. I know my do's and don'ts. So no, it does not. That's another thing, if you don't mind me saying, on my second day on the job, an employee bought a gun to work. No, yeah, an employee bought a gun to work. So really, you, well, I'll let my boss handle that.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's not, they're never going to focus on you, Ms. Reed. But the second thing I have a question for is directly to you. Why is it that you want to do this work?
Because I have rheumatoid arthritis. If I could stay in the nursing field and live like I used to, I would. This is something I'm interacting with people. You know what I'm saying? And so far, I've been blessed. I've not had any rough encounters, you know what I'm saying? And so that's why I like to do this. Somebody's got to be smart and be calm-headed. You know, hey, I worked along with officers, let me tell you. But it's just, I didn't come here to sit down just because I have rheumatoid arthritis. Every morning I get up, I'm going to keep going.
Thank you for your statement.
Then Councilman Duncan was next up, and then Councilman Kell.
Yeah, Ms. Reed, and there's no wrong answer to this, but this is the question I was trying, getting at earlier, was, do you currently have an employer who's ready to hire you if you get this license?
I've already worked.
Or do you need this license to go apply for those jobs?
I need this license to go back to my job.
Okay, so you're currently employed?
I'm currently employed.
And I missed that. I think you said that, and I missed it. I apologize.
I was employed, well, they offered me a job at the position, but the same thing came up, and I didn't pursue it. I just sit down on it.
Okay, but my point is, if you get this, like, you can walk into a job.
If you say yes, I'll go back to work Thursday.
Okay. And the reason I ask that is, and this is where I go back to, again, this is where I teeter back and forth. I mean, if that employer has done their background checks, and done their due diligence, and is willing to, has basically offered her the job already, I feel that plays into this also, because they're not going to hire someone that they have concerns about also. They're going to have done theirs. So that's why I say I keep going back and forth.
They've been very patient and wished in the best for me.
Okay, that's why it was important to ask that question. So thank you very much.
Councilman Kell?
Can I, Mr. Klump, can I ask you a question real quick? What are the, in essence, what falls into having to have this license? Like, what type of security work would have to fall into this?
That would be an ordinance question. I'd have to defer to, to you turning on that one.
Because I've read this earlier today, read it again today, and I've, it's, you know, it's, it's a lot broader than what I first read it, so.
Under the ordinance, it's unlawful for any person to engage in or conduct a private security business without a first of turning this license. That includes any work as an employee, agent, or guard unless they've obtained the license. It does not include individuals doing purely clerical work. It also has several exceptions, such as state employees, officers of the United States, or another political subdivision, state-certified law enforcement officers, and private detectives who are licensed pursuant to state law.
So by my work background history, I think I should have applied for this license several times and never have. So I commend Ms. Reed for going through the process of this, because I've done several security positions in the city, and no one's ever told me, "Hey, you need to get a license for this." So I think it's something we need to advertise a little bit more, that this is required within our city. Because it's not even a thing where they said, "Oh, we're licensed under a blanket because of our company or this or that." It's, you know, and I know they've been within the city limits. So this is kind of, like I said, the first, you know, today when I was looking over this, the first I ever heard that there was a license for this required.
I withhold comment on that, but Councilman Dobler, thank you.
No, yeah, no, I agree. I agree.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Major Klump. Looks like this incident was about seven years ago, 2017. You indicated you had 10 years of history, any criminal complaints other than this in that 10-year time?
So I believe there was a few traffic, minor traffic, but everything outside of that. The only qualifying incident under the statute for approval or denial of this license was this one incident.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Major. And thank you, Ms. Reed. If what we have before us is an appeal for, of the denial, if we would vote yes in favor of the appeal, then Ms. Reed would be able to obtain her position again, correct?
You would be voting to overturn the chief's decision and issue the license.
Okay. Well, I've spent a lot of time, a lot of years in law enforcement, and I've seen a lot of people do a lot of things that really rose to the level of the discipline and the punishment that they received. I can't, in my mind, reconcile that this incident rises to any level like that. And it would be for me, it would be a yes for me to overturn the chief's decision and approve an appeal so that this woman can get back into a profession and continue to be a citizen here in the city of Topeka and live a good life. So those are my comments. If there aren't any others, Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the testimony as well as the, I think it's unfortunate we did not get some other documents earlier, but did get them today. I was concerned at first because there was a discrepancy between what Ms. Reed said in her explanation of what happened and what it appeared the Wichita Police Department had down, and so on. Her explanation covered the difference between the two without any prompting on any of our part, and I appreciate that. The fact that it was, she said it was a burglar, otherwise they said it was a guy she knew who was in her basement, and those didn't seem to work together. But the explanation has been helpful and satisfactory to me. So I would support the appeal as well.
Councilman Dobler?
Just one quick comment. I think I probably speak for everybody here that, just to acknowledge that the chief and the department did their job under this ordinance. Their job is to deny a license if there are certain things evident in the record. The way the ordinance is written, you get a second chance in front of this body, and that's where it's at now. So no disrespect to the chief or anybody. But I will also support this appeal. Thank you.
Councilman Kell?
Is making a motion to approve?
I would like it to be very specific, so that we know what it means. So you would like to make a, I'm sorry.
State manager have something?
State the motion.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I do also want to point out that as part of this process, in the event that we ever have something like this come forward again, there is an appeal process. There's a 14-day period by which the appellate could have had a discussion with the chief, that maybe some of these details could have been shared. I'm not going to speak for Deputy Chief, interim chief Holtham, but I do believe that had we had this opportunity, I think that there probably would have been a different outcome. So along those lines, I just wanted to state that for the record, that there is a 14-day period that Ms. Reed could have come in and met with the chief and maybe given this explanation that maybe would have prevented this coming to the governing body. So I just want to point that out as well. Thank you.
Good point. Councilman Duncan?
Then that needs to be in the letter. And I'm not coming after you, but that's not in the letter of appeal that she got. The letter says, "You got 10 days to file an appeal. Here's the ordinance. You've been denied." So I appreciate that, and that probably is in the law. But I mean, then if that's the case, that, just heads up, that needs to go in this letter, so that they know they need, got 14 days. Because what this says is, if you don't appeal this in 10 days, it stands. I mean, it's very clear in the letter she got. So let's look at rewriting the letter to make it a little more clearer.
And Councilman, I don't know what may have gone to Ms. Reed before this letter. There may have been something else. Again, without the chief here, I can't really explain that. But definitely, I think it's a process improvement that we can certainly look into.
Thank you.
Councilman Kell?
Move to approve the overturning of the interim chief's decision to deny the license.
Is there a second?
She's nodding.
Yeah.
I asked for it to be clear.
Is it, is it correct? An emotion informed? City attorney?
Who made the second?
Who made the second? I'll second.
I'll, yeah, I'm proud of me second.
So the motion before you would allow Ms. Reed to get a license?
Call the roll, please. Do you have a comment?
Yes. I do want us to take a look at this appeal process in a sense of making sure that, to cover our, to cover all bases going forward, that if the situation was minor, and it was a technicality, or whatever the case may be, if there's some type of way to have a big impact as part of that appeal process, because the rules are there for a reason. And us as a governing body can say, and then have our heartstrings tug on, and that's fine. I don't think that's necessarily what this situation is. I think this was a very clear, honest situation. But for future references, it can get muddy of who says what, and matching the police report to statements and all that. I would just like to make sure that if we're making a decision to overturn someone who has the professional experience like interim chief does, that we have all of the facts on our end to make sure that we're at least making the best decision for us as a governing body. Does that make sense?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay. Anything further? We call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
And Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Thank you for the discussion, and I think it was appropriate so that we can get all the detail and make an informed decision. So thank you very much. And again, Major, thank you for the presentation. And you will relay the governing body's concerns to Acting Chief Holtham?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to Action Item 4B. Madam Clerk?
B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code on property located at 2303 Southwest College Avenue by changing the zoning from R1 single-family dwelling to all to PUD planned unit development district to allow R1 uses and non-for-profit social services subject to conditions of approval.
Mr. State manager?
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Dan Warner, Planning Division Director, will lead us to this item.
Mayor, governing body, good evening. So the property in question here is the former Stout Elementary School at 23rd and College. That school closed in 2022. The Community Resource Council is currently leasing that building from USD 501. And they sublease it then to various nonprofits. The uses include some office uses, there's a daycare, there's churches within there, so it's a range of different things. So the PUD zoning is being requested here to kind of level up the uses with what's going on with the zoning. So the PUD zoning will allow those uses, the office, the daycare, all of that, but retain the R1 designation uses. So it could become a school in the future. So we're not closing the door on that. If 501 decides they want to open that back up for a school, zoning will not prevent that. So the applicant held a neighborhood information meeting, planning commission held a public hearing, and unanimously approved this. Staff recommends a Staff recommends approval as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Dan? Now, Councilman Banks, Councilwoman Hiller, then Councilman Duncan?
Dan, did I hear stout or scot? Stout. Stout. Thank you.
Okay. That was your question. Okay. Councilman Duncan?
So the building is owned by 501. The request is coming from the tenant. I mean, 501's, I don't know, but we need their permission, but they're good with this. They know what's happening. We've had those discussions, because I don't see anything in here from them, which doesn't mean much, but that's why I'm asking.
So property owners are required to sign those rezoning applications.
Okay. All right. That's what I thought, but I better ask.
Are there questions? Anybody online that I may not see? Okay. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Motion to approve. I share NIA with Marcus Miller. All the people are happy with this. I thought I seen Mary Thomas in the, in the audience if she wants to say something, but everybody's really happy with the use of the building and it just not boarded up or taken the heart out of the neighborhood. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, seconded by Councilman Kell, and Councilwoman Mary Thomas is in the room with a big smile on her face right now.
We just can't allow talking at zoning amendments. There's no public comment on this.
Yeah, I was just, I was just acknowledging. Okay. So any further?
Well, she doesn't have to talk. She can give her thumbs up.
Any other questions or discussion? Councilman Kell?
These are good for Topeka. I have one in my district and, in LMI district in Fennel East, that they can, they can house so many things and be hubs for, for people that can't get maybe to downtown, to DCF or to United Way or anywhere else like that. And plus, there's classes, daycare, all those kind of stuff. So these are always great opportunities to take an old school building and repurpose it into, into something that can really help a neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you. There is a requirement, though, on this particular item before we hold the vote, and that is to reveal any ex parte communications. So prior to proceeding with the vote, each member of the governing body who has engaged in ex parte communication with any individual either in favor of or against the matter being considered must state that the communication occurred and objectively and impartially consider the measure based only upon the evidence provided on the record. The record includes the planning commission minutes, the staff report, and its attachments, the public comments made during the planning commission hearing, and similar relevant information related to the matter. So is there anyone that wants to reveal or needs to reveal any ex parte communication on this issue? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've received emails, I went to a meeting, I talked to the NIA people, just, just a lot of people, when I can make a sound, fair decision.
Thank you, Mayor. So the vote, voting requirements and options that we have on this issue is, one, to approve the planning commission's recommendation, reject the amendment or amend the planning commission's recommendation, or remand back to the planning commission on this recommendation. And so there's a motion right now to approve, and it's been seconded. So Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmembers Ortiz? Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
I will abstain.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hiller?
Yes.
All right, we have eight yes with one abstention. The motion carries.
We'll move on now to Action Item 4C. Madam Clerk?
C is a resolution introduced by city manager Dr. Robert Perez recommending approval and an adjustment of access control to the final plat at the Community Plaza subdivision.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Braxton Copley, our Assistant City Manager, will lead us through this item.
Thank you, City Manager. This, not the correct attachment. There we go. Thank you, Dan. This item basically stems from complaints from citizens living in this area that went through their council member who asked us to do a traffic study, and that's because of the amount of accidents and the traffic disruption on Kansas Avenue. We commenced the study, concluded it. Consultant had some very good recommendations to overall improve traffic flow and safety along this corridor, which would include closing the existing entrance that serves the Club Car Wash and the Dollar Tree store, and then creating a new access point south for the Dollar Tree as well as a new access point north for the Club Car Wash. This may sound familiar because a few weeks ago, we were in front of you with a condemnation ordinance to move forward on condemnation because Club Car Wash wanted $10,000 for the easement to allow us to create this access point, which is going to benefit their business by allowing safely queuing and stacking that traffic to get in and out of the car wash. And then we are bearing the cost of this improvement, which is estimated to be approximately $130,000 to solve a problem created by Club Car Wash. We presented this to the Public Infrastructure Committee last week, and it was approved by them. I will defer to Madam Chair from the committee if she would like to add some additional comments, but I would respectfully ask for approval of the, of the resolution. I will point out that California is a arterial street, and the access is limited by the plat on that. So we need this action by the governing body to create the break-in access for the two new points as well as to close off the access for the existing drive approach. With that, I will be quiet and stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Copley? Do you have a question?
I have a comment.
Okay.
This is a high-traffic area that has, and almost the way you have to approach like Dollar Tree and stuff like that, it creates that slowdown in traffic. And with people not paying attention, things like that, which we do have a few other spots in town that, since we've had this first meeting, I've looked at, that we need to really start looking at some of these places because to try to turn into there, you can't go like you go on a straight, level area, and it does cause that backup. And if someone's not paying attention, it can cause some accidents and also the injuries to people. So to me, this is a great plan of making our streets safer for our drivers and pedestrians.
Motion to approve by Councilman Banks. Is there a second?
I'll second. Let's, for sake of discussion.
Second by Councilwoman Ortiz. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Councilmembers Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiller?
Yes.
And Ortiz?
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Okay, motion's carried. We'll move to Action Item 4D. Madam Clerk?
D is an ordinance introduced by city manager Dr. Robert Perez, amending sections 563-040 and 563-050 concerning licenses and registration term and fees of the Topeka Municipal Code and repealing original sections.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Richard Faulkner, our Development Services Division Director, will lead us through this item.
Evening, Mayor, Council. As you're aware, brought this to you last week, what we're trying to do is increase or decrease the time that it takes for us to issue licenses to the contractors. If we cut the contractors, we break them up into two groups, have one go for this year one year, and the other group go for two years, then eventually we'll get everybody on a two-year cycle, but we'll only be doing half the licenses at the time where we're doing all of them at the same time. So this will help decrease the time of us issuing the licenses, and it'd be beneficial to the contractors as well as the city.
Thank you, Richard. Any questions for Mr. Faulkner? Councilman Dobler?
Quick question. As I recall, this is half the work and twice the fee. Is that right?
It seemed like that, but since it's two-year licenses, we're giving them two-year licenses, so.
Rhetorical question. Thank you.
You're feeling much better, Councilman Dobler. Move to approve. Okay. Who made the initial motion? Motion to approve by Councilman Duncan, seconded by Councilman Dobler. If you call the roll, please.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Questions for Councilman?
So what I pulled off says Councilman Duncan proposed amendments and underlined. So are we considering the amended version?
No.
I thought we were, because it was the introduced note?
No, it wasn't.
Both ordinances are attached to the agenda. So you have the original ordinance and then the Duncan proposal.
I rescind my motion.
Okay. Just checking.
Is this my second also?
Yeah, I believe he asked for it to be considered, but it was never entered, or it was never moved forward.
Oh, well, then, no, let's review that, because I think, I just put that away. My change was pretty simple, right? We went with the allowing them to pay it over, right? Allowing them to pay it over two years if they so choose with a small convenience fee if they make that choice. If you look at the fees, they're, they're pretty low as is, and it's, it's not huge. It's not, I mean, it's, what, $20, $25?
$50.
$50. So if they don't want to make that choice, they can pay it all at once, but if they want to, then that's a business decision they can make. Again, that's really modeled after what the state has done, so I just tried to keep us in line. So a lot of these people are getting licenses at the state. It will be nothing new to them, so it just seems to make sense if the state does it and has worked for them, put it in here. So that, so that was my suggested change, so I would make the motion to include that change in the version that we would pass tonight.
A motion and a second to include the suggestion by Councilman Duncan to this issue. Richard, do you have any comment or response on this?
No, I just added it since it was a suggestion by Councilman.
I might, I might offer up just something, just so you understand why we went back and forth on this at all in the first place. So I don't think it's going to cause a terrible issue, because I think most people will take advantage of not having to pull their paperwork together every year to file with us. However, the reason there was some back and forth is working with IT and their team to understand what capabilities we have with our current permitting and licensing software to bill and separate it that way. It's going to be a little bit manual until we get Tyler implemented next year, but Richard's assured me that him and his team don't think it'll be an issue to be able to, it'll be a little bit of a manual effort, but I think that we can make that happen.
Okay. So I want to make sure, for the record, Councilwoman Hiller?
I had had a concern at first with the discussion we had before because I didn't want to penalize somebody that didn't think they could pay a big fee all at once for splitting it, but I appreciate that the ordinance version you sent out had the fees in it. The fees are very reasonable, even at the doubled rate, and so I think instead that would be an incentive for people to just pay it all at once and that most people who are in business would be able to do it. So with that, I support it. Thank you.
Do we have a clear motion?
Yes.
Want to review anything else?
No, now that we've got it right.
Okay. All right. Ready to vote? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Hill, um, Hiller?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yep.
And Banks?
Yes.
All right, we have eight yes. The motion carries.
Okay, motion's carried. We'll move on to Action Item 4E. Madam Clerk?
E is a resolution introduced by city manager Dr. Robert Perez regarding additional funding for operations and maintenance of Hotel Topeka in the amount of $500,000.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. So I'm understanding this is the item that we just amended. Is there any, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. This is the resolution that would authorize funding that at the last TDC meeting you approved, provided that this body approves it, except you approved it in an amount of $201,000. So if you wanted to pass this, the first motion would be to amend the $500,000 to $201,000, and then you would make a motion to pass the resolution as amended.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Duncan?
I'll make said motion to reduce the amount from $500,000 to $201,000 as approved by the Topeka Development Corporation.
Second the motion.
Okay, motion by Councilman Duncan, seconded by Councilman Kell. Any further comment, question? Uh, Miller, sorry. It's that reflection I can't get. Taking, okay, Madam Clerk, for the vote, please.
Councilmembers Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
No.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Ortiz?
No.
Banks?
No.
And Kell?
Yes.
All right, we have six yes with Councilmembers Dobler, Ortiz, and Banks voting no. The motion carries.
Thank you. Move on now to the non-action items on the.
I would move to approve.
I'm sorry.
The $201,000 expenditure for Hotel Topeka.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That was an amendment.
That's right.
Prove as amended. We got it.
We have a motion and a second. And Councilman Dobler? Oh, okay.
Who's the second?
I just want to visit a little bit about my no vote for those that weren't present for the previous meeting. I still support the purchase of the hotel for the reasons it was purchased. I commend Braxton, the city manager, and staff for doing what they're doing to keep that place going. My opposition at this point is we don't have any indication from the county on what they're doing to upgrade the Maynor Conference Center, which is a significant part of the draw to this hotel. I'd asked for that two months ago, and I'd asked for our staff to get with the county and start those discussions, and indicated at that time that I wasn't going to vote for any future funding until that happened. That has not happened, although I understand that it's in the works finally. So that's the reason for my no vote. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we voted to approve the reduction to $201,000, and now the motion is to approve.
The resolution as amended.
As amended.
And do you have a second? I heard a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
So if you'll call the roll, please.
All right, Councilmember Dobler?
No.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Ortiz?
No.
Banks?
No.
Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
All right, we have six yes with Councilmembers Ortiz, Banks, and Dobler voting no. The motion carries. The motion carries.
I might note that we did have a gentleman signed up to speak on this issue, but I don't see him in the room anymore, unless he's hiding behind that podium.
Nope, he's not.
All right. Okay, we'll move on now then to the non-action items on the agenda. Madam Clerk.
A is discussion of funding recommendations by the Alcohol and Drug Advisory Council in the amount of $670,534 for the 2025 Special Alcohol Fund.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor members of the governing body, Riannon Freeman, our Director of Development Services, Housing, and Planning, and Carrie Higgins, our Housing Service Manager, will lead us through this item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There we go. So the city has estimated that we have a little over 670,000 that will be available for the Special Alcohol and Drug Abuse Fund for 2025. Just a reminder that this amount is projected based on the liquor tax that is collected by the state of Kansas, and it is required to be allocated towards alcohol and drug programs. So we released an RFP in June. We had four agencies apply for the funding with a total of five programs. The Grant Review Committee met in July to score each of the applications, and then in August, the whole Special Alcohol and Drug Advisory Council voted yes to approve the scores. The agencies are then given a week to appeal if they wish to. We did not have any appeals this year. And so tonight, we bring the recommendations before you for discussion, and then next week, they'll come back before you for a vote. So these are the specific recommended amounts, as you can see, for each agency and program. We did have an excess of funding this year, so each of the agencies are receiving a little more than what they asked for. And I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Carrie, Councilwoman Heller?
Carrie, I ran through a question-answer with you today that I think would be good to share with the council. We've been dealing with the homeless issues, and I was particularly interested, pleased to see the increase in funding for the social detox beds at Vallejo, and wondered just how they're doing and how the capacity and bed availability is if someone can, needs to be brought in. Is there room?
They, I believe the stats are 94% of anyone that is seeking detox are able to get a bed within 24 hours. They currently have nine beds. They do have some flexibility. They try to accommodate any walk-ins if possible, and they have some flexibility in that manner. So they usually are able to accommodate anyone that needs assistance.
I think that's really important for us overall as we look at this. So thank you so much for that. Thank you.
Councilman Kell.
I just remember this last year being a very emotional issue, and we were trying to find funding everywhere. So it's really nice this year that there's extra money there that can go to the programs and kind of hopefully make up for a little bit of last year's loss to try to make things a little better. I know it was a very debatable subject that we were going over last year, and so this year it's nice and simple, it seems like.
Councilman Miller.
I would just like to offer up the opportunity, if there's any of these programs present, to give me information about what they plan to do with these funds if approved.
And we do have several of the agencies present.
Let's for discussion if anybody wants to step forward and give some detail to their program. Good evening.
I am Bruce McConaco. I'm with Shawnee County Court Services. I am the Drug Treatment Court Coordinator for Shawnee County. This grant funds 95% of all of our residential treatment services, our outpatient treatment, whether that's intensive outpatient or just regular outpatient treatment services for substance abuse disorder. And about 5% of the funding goes for drug and alcohol testing. So that's how we will be using the funds that you give us. And I do want to thank you for continuing to fund us.
Can you give us an idea of how many clients you've been able to serve?
Right now, I believe we have 35 in our Drug Treatment Court program. Our Drug Treatment Court program is a high-risk, high-needs program that serves individuals that are looking at a presumptive prison sentence. And if they are screened eligible for Drug Treatment Court, they will come into our program, which is a minimum of 12 months. And if they successfully complete that, instead of getting their prison sentence, they will then be placed on a period of probation.
Have you seen a good success rate with that effort?
I believe we have, Your Honor. Excuse me.
That's fine.
So used to talking to my judge. I believe we have seen a success rate. We just recently had one individual graduate, and we will have another individual graduating the drug program on, in October, and then he will be placed on probation. And so far, I believe we're doing well.
Well, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to present?
My name's Kathy Walker. I'm the Director of Vallejo Recovery Center, and we are, the funds that we get from the council really support our detox system program. We are an unduplicated service in Topeka. The cost for a detox is high. We do vitals on the clients that come in. We provide a safe environment. We take the burdens off the hospital, off the streets. We get a lot of walk-ups, street homeless. We always try and fit those in. It just really is a safe place for them to come. We've been around since 1983, very much proven program. So any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your work.
I'm the Executive Director at PARZ, or Prevention and Resiliency Services, and I thank you all for considering us for funding this year. We have two programs that are funded through this, these available funds. The first one is prevention education that we provide in schools in Topeka and Shawnee County. And last year, we served about 5,500 students with lessons on prevention in regards to all substances and the impacts that those can have on their wellness and well-being. And the other program that we have is our Evaluation and Assessment Program, which is focused on providing assessments for youth that are referred to us by their schools for being under the influence, in possession of self-reporting that they've used, that type of thing, kind of depending on whatever the need is. The school refers to our agency, and with these funds, we're able to support the family with the first steps that they may need to take towards getting their child help if they should need it. So it's really concise. Any questions?
Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Gassman. I'm the Supervisor at Kansas Children's Service League, and the program that these funds help support is an intensive home visitation case management program for families where the parents are having issues with substance use. So we work with the parents on helping connect them with treatment and recovery resources, being a support person for them in their recovery, while also helping them with parenting, case management, with the goal of children staying at home and out of the foster care system.
Any questions? Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay, anything for any discussion? Councilman Miller.
I just want to say that the reason I even wanted to do that is because I think it's important for the public to not just see the names of the organizations that are on these sheets and that get this funding. They need to hear the actual work that is being done, because people have a lot to say about where their tax dollars go, and it's going to really good things the majority of the time. So it's important for them to understand that. Thank you.
Understood. Detail does add emphasis to what the work is. Thank you very much.
Really quickly, if I may, I just have to say that Councilman Kell pointed out that last year, we got a little off track, but I do want to commend Carrie, her team, the Grant Review Committee, and obviously all the grantees, who, every single one of them was here tonight to speak and answer questions, which is great, unprompted and ready to go. So we love that. But a lot of hard work went into making sure that this year went off flawlessly, and I think Carrie's done a really good job, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Kell.
I was going to move to see if we can vote on this now. It seems like there is no issues ahead of us, so I move that we approve this now.
I believe your motion would be to waive the rules to allow you.
Sorry, excuse me. Thank you.
So we state your motion.
I move to waive the rules and vote on the issue tonight.
Is there a second?
I second that.
I have a motion to waive the rules and move this to an action item for this evening for a decision. Second by Councilman Miller.
Yes. I wish I probably asked that first. Is this okay? Are we doing it right now?
Yes, that is fine. There are no rules or regulations that would prevent us from voting tonight.
I'm trying to make sure that anybody online is still with us, and.
We need six to pass.
Okay. And City Attorney, there's no issue with this?
No, first you would need seven votes to waive the rules, and then you would need to make a subsequent motion to adopt, because that only needs six votes.
So we're voting now on the motion to waive the rules.
Yes. All right, Councilmembers Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Heller.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
And Dobler.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Okay. The item now is up for action by this governing body. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, motion approved by Councilman Duncan, seconded by Councilman Kell. For the discussion, if you call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Heller, or I'm sorry, Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Heller.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
And Duncan.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Okay, motion's been carried. Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you all for appearing this evening. Okay, we'll move on now to non-action item 5B. Madam Clerk.
B is discussion of a proposed amendment to Section 60 of the City's Land Bank Ordinance Number 20426 concerning administration of property.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor members of the governing body, Manon Freeman, our Planning Development Services Director, will lead us through this item.
Manon.
Thank you. So here before you tonight to talk about our land bank ordinance. Got in front of the Policy and Finance Committee on August 15th to get some feedback, so wanted to open this up to the governing body for discussion tonight. The Land Bank Board of Trustees has made the decision that they would like to move forward with changing the language that would allow us to transfer property to be utilized as rental property instead of only land ownership as it exists today in the current ordinance. I think there's several examples of this where we can talk about even some of the city-owned land that we have, where we've got opportunities to bring in some M2, M3-zoned properties for some multifamily development that might serve better to a rental outcome versus single-family homeownership. So that's what we're here to discuss, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Councilman Duncan.
Yeah, just a few things on this. You know, when the land bank first came up, we talked about this, went back and forth a little bit. I don't know that there was anyone overly concerned about it, but it made sense at the time to just say, let's just not deal with it, let's get this program started. And then we, as the board got together with the citizens, they could have the discussion on their thoughts on it. And that was probably the right approach, and I'll tell you why here in a minute. But we've run into, as Riannon said, we have a couple lots for fairly large, and they are perfect for some multifamily development. Maybe that's an apartment, maybe it's a duplex, triplex, even a fourplex. We don't know, because we haven't worked with developers, but they're ripe for that. This does not allow us currently under the land bank to do it to that. We can only do it for homeownership. And the people who are going to want to develop those areas, those spots, aren't going to sell those as condos. They're going to want to use them as those multifamily developments. As I always do, as we run this conversation all the time, I'll remind everybody, all the rules will still apply to these folks as they will to the others. It's not going to be a different set of rules. So you can't owe back taxes, you can't have code enforcement violations, you can't, you have to own it for a minimum of five years, meaning you can't be the shell group who says, I'm going to do it, and then suddenly turn it over to one of our dreaded landlords that we don't want to get their hands up. So all of those rules will still apply. Everybody still has to be approved by the Board of Directors, and that board has leeway to pretty much dismiss you if they just don't like you, right? I mean, so if they don't think it's the right sell. So they have a lot of leeway too, in those citizens that are making these decisions. But the other thing that I think is important to add, which is even different from when Policy and Finance looked at this, because we had a land bank board meeting today before we came here, is the board did decide that we need to develop a second set of guidelines that has all the baseline stuff and the others, but a few other things. I don't have all those yet. We're going to work on those. But they would include things like perhaps you have to be based in Kansas, right? So the out-of-state owners couldn't be the ones, right, as a protection, because we have issues with that. So we're going to look at some of those additional things that you would have to qualify for if you were going to make it a rental property, to add in some more of those steps. The other thing we talked about today that we're going to take a look at is, as we look at these properties, if they're eligible for it, we know, it was brought up by one of our members, that how these developments, and it gets a little screwy, it probably needs some fixing eventually, impacts the health map, rentals versus ownership. And we're going to take a look at that health map and have that in front of us and be aware of how those decisions impact that community, not just in, hey, we need more housing, but what's the health score going to do if we add these housings? Or what's that going to impact to that area? Is it going to be positive based on what that map looks like? Or is it going to be a negative? If it's negative, then maybe that's not the development in that area, right? So we're going to take all those into consideration as these rentals. That is a very active conversation. It's going to take us a few months to get there, but I wanted everybody to know that that's gone along with this conversation as we've brought this change forward from that group. So we are trying very hard to make sure that every step is in place, not just because we want to do it right for the community and make sure that if they become rental properties of the right kind, but as we talked about today, we all won't be on that board forever. And we want all that stuff to be in place and those rules to be there, so whoever sits in those seats next knows that we've set a certain standard and they need to adhere to it. So that's just a little additional information that I just want everyone to know, that a lot of thought has gone into this by that board as we, before we brought this in, as we brought this forward. So thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Heller.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for bringing this forward. All along, I have felt like rentals obviously needed to be part of our redevelopment strategy. So I'm certainly comfortable with this change. I want to encourage you, though, that single-family homeownership and rental properties, no matter what the volume, aren't our only options. Some of our most successful housing developments in this city are co-ops and condominiums. Colonial Park in southeast Topeka and Foxridge in west Topeka have been co-op since they were built, and they are a wonderful option for, a bridge option or long-term option for people that haven't been in a position to become, or even want to be, single-family homeowners. The beauty of those as well is that they're generally maintenance-free, or they're, you know, you own your unit, or you own a share in your unit, but somebody else is taking care of the roof and the mowing and so on. We had some condominium conversions, like Huntington in southwest Topeka, for instance. Those also are really, really successful options. So as you're hoping to bridge that and thinking about redevelopment, let's include co-ops and condos as well. Thank you.
Councilman Kell.
Kind of what Councilwoman was getting on, I believe that's a great, especially someone that wants to get in the home market, may not have a lot saved up, and this is a great way where they can spend a few years there, build their equity, build up there. Or it's a nice transition for someone that may want to step out of having a large house and want to have that option there. So I think what Councilwoman said is very good on that aspect, and just right place, right time on those situations. But I think those should definitely be options of ownership of a condominium or co-op or whatever it may be on those.
Any comments? Are there comments? Thank you very much, Riannan. Okay, we've come to public comment. We have one gentleman signed up for public comment. Lizone Grace.
Digital Inclusion Week, yes? Do you know who this is?
Let's see, what would he talk about? Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, trying to guess.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members, for your time to present to you. I just wanted to share some information about, I think, over a year ago, we informed that we were a part of the Microsoft Corporation's TechSpark fellow program. And we had responsibilities. There's one for every state, our organization, IBSA Incorporated, is that for Kansas. I did share the information with you in advance, a link that went to the overall impact study or report that showed what everybody, every fellow in every state had did. And I also added some backup information so that some people who really don't know me, haven't not heard me speak about this, sort of know that I'm not just Lizone come lately to this party on this issue. So I did want to speak about the goals and objectives that we had on the first round, which was to share information in a timely manner to the business community, elected officials, stakeholders regarding the digital divide elements and the funding opportunities, which would consist of timelines, amounts, ARPA funds, Digital Equity Act funds. There's a whole slew of historic amounts of funds now available, that we have been talking about for 20 years, but now are available for devices, for digital literacy skills training, and for public Wi-Fi's, for a variety of things. Our own outcome as the fellows program is that we were able to help other organizations here in Topeka and in KCK generate over $300,000 worth of state funds that would cover devices for Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and expand digital literacy and skills training programs here in the city of Topeka with our public library. Over 300 laptops just from our organization specifically, to date, we have delivered to single parents looking for work, participating in a DCF-approved program throughout the state. Maybe only two of them actually came from Topeka. The next round of funding from the state is here. The doc, which is really digital literacy and skills training, that's probably about three, four weeks before that RFP closes to apply. I'm saying this because I've always tried to keep information out here, so people know what's going on. They know what the money is there, they know when it's coming, so that they will have an ample opportunity to apply or get their act together, so that when the monies come, they won't have to sit on the sidelines and not get these monies as a value to people in this community. The next round of funding coming up called Adopt, which is really to create public Wi-Fi's and for device distribution program, that's probably going to come up sometimes earlier next year. The state, I sat on the state advisory council for, to create the Digital Equity Strategic Plan. This is given the vision of where the monies that are received from the federal government are going to go and what it's going to be used for. So there may be an opportunity for a capacity grant. Basically, those type of programs that will start doing the things that's within this state plan. I probably won't have time in the end, but I would have, if the city wants to know what they can do to help, just let me know. Now that we have actually been accepted into the second round of the Microsoft Corporation's TechSpark program, TechSpark 2.0, as far as I'm concerned, our organization is going to be working and focusing more on digital equity empowerment project, which is really continuing to provide laptops statewide for those receiving cash assistance or SNAP, participating in job training, or looking for work. Initiate classes at the Gil Carter Initiative, the building where we have been working with, in partnership with the library, which should be putting some classes out there, and any other interested organization that wants to be a part of the tech infrastructure that we're putting up there. I think I have like two minutes' worth of information, if possible.
Motioned and approved with a second from Kell and from Councilman Dobler. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Lizone.
What I mentioned about initiating more classes, specific classes now at the Gil Carter Initiative behind Highland Park High, our specific area is really going to focus more on conducting AI-specific classes, artificial intelligence, because, of course, Microsoft is the leader in ChatGPT, Copilot, and those are things that we had our young people participating in, and are teaching those who, assisting those who are seeking jobs, how to use Copilot to be a more effective job search within using the AI tools that are available. This is going to, the classes will be to train and provide us an opportunity to share Microsoft products and to the general population. I have sent out an email, some of the things that I send out will be open to the general public. Some of them will only be open and available, webinars, fireside chats, to those people that we deemed are our partners in our ecosystem, and those who have supported our organization when we bought our TechSpark coach, Erica Smith, to Topeka, whether that's in Kansas City, Kansas, or whether that's here. And finally, what I'm going to do, because I got this information, I can only do so much, is to continue to share the information of value in a timely fashion to the governing body and interested stakeholders, because the succession of how these monies are going to be coming up, is going to be coming up quick, and hopefully, you can speak with people who have bigger budgets than I do, bigger staffs than I do, to go for this money, because the people in these neighborhoods, low income, what have you, they don't have the ability of writing this and getting it themselves. I want to thank you for the city for their ARPA funds, Everde has supported, Cox Charities have supported, the public library is in support, Gil Carter and DCF, and of course, Microsoft philanthropies, and my own Microsoft coach, Erica Smith. If there was something that the city could do to maintain the partnership, well, I will cover that at another time, unless someone has a question.
Okay. Thank you, Lizone.
Thank you.
Thank you for your meeting earlier this week.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Okay, there are no other persons signed up for a public comment. We'll move to announcements. Madam Clerk?
For the October 8th agenda, we will have one board appointment for the Topeka Planning Commission. We have two presentations, one on general obligation bonds, the other is the Mayor's Task Force Against Domestic Violence 2023 Annual Report. Consent agenda, we have two noise exceptions, one expenditure ordinance. Action items will include the real estate contract with Mainline Development and City of Topeka for the light-duty fleet garage. The recommendations for the 2025 Special Alcohol Grant Fund were approved this evening. Two discussions, one on the Citizen Government Review Committee, and the other one on unlawful camping amending to Topeka Municipal Code, Section 945, 350, and 360.
Thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, along Mr. Gray's comments about digital inclusivity, just want to give a shout out to Director Glade and the Community Engagement Team. Today, they were out, and somehow or another, I got wrangled into helping distribute computers. My back hurts now, but I just want to give a shout out to the team as far as what they're doing and how they're contributing to the community. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Miller? Announcements? Got you.
Nothing today, thanks.
Okay. Councilman Dobler?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilwoman Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor, just two quick things. My next office hours are this Saturday, 9:00 AM to 10:30 at Fairlan Plaza. Feel free to come by. And the second thing is, T-PAC has hired a new executive director. His name is Daniel Kaye. He comes to us from Iola, where he spent the past five years at the Bolus Fine Arts Center there, but his background is much more extensive than that. He actually comes from California and has a long history of promotion and bringing in acts and raising money, so that's good. So he'll be new to Topeka in general, but I think it's also an exciting hire for T-PAC, and I would encourage, from 5:30 to 6:30 at Blue Moose on Monday, the council always invite you to just come by and say hello to him and introduce yourself and welcome to Topeka, because that'll be his first day on the job. So it's an exciting new direction. They did a pretty comprehensive search, interviewed quite a few people, so hopefully this will be a good first step. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hofer?
I'm going to do an extension of what's gone out in our email, what's gone out in city communications, but I, this summer, I got a notice that my personal information had been shared, and they have my social security number, all that kind of stuff. So this was kind of timely today. The police department is going to sponsor three cyber fraud awareness training sessions this month. So I want everybody to consider going, because it was not just me, there were probably about half the people in the country had their information shared. So session one is on October 9th from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Shawnee County Public Library in Marvin Auditorium. Session number two is on October 16th, which is a Wednesday also, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Brewster Place Event Center. And the last session is on Thursday, October 17th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the Oakland Community Center. And they will take an hour to explain basically what has happened, how it's going to affect you, and they're going to take at least a half hour of questions if you've got any questions. So I'd say it's worth anybody's time to come in, listen to what they have to say, and take care of your identity, make sure that it's not compromised.
Thank you, Riannan. Councilwoman Hiller? Councilwoman Ortiz, still with us?
Nothing.
Councilman Banks?
I'd just like to give a shout out to my six-year-old grandson's football team, undefeated in two years, and he's finally starting to catch the ball, and he's averaging about two touchdowns a game. He loves Councilman Miller. That's his, but I just wanted to give a shout out to a six-year-old that attends Holy Family Catholic School, and his behavior is so, I just like the way he's learning. The school is great, and he's doing a really good job in football, and he thinks he's going to the Super Bowl. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilman Kell?
That's two more touchdowns than you caught, right?
Stop it.
So October is dysautonomia Awareness Month. Dysautonomia can affect heart rate, breathing, digestion, sweat, tears, saliva. It's in essence, an internal attack on the body. I have family members that are afflicted with this, and it's one of those things of, it's a reminder of not all disabilities are visible, and people across the country are dealing with situations every day that people have no clue that they're going through certain situations. So just remember, it's always one of those things of, maybe it's best to ask questions when appropriate with people than just making judgments on them. Thank you.
I just have a brief announcement. I just want to remind everybody that they have until October 15th deadline to register to vote. Extremely important that you take advantage of this privilege that has been given to us as citizens of the United States. Don't overlook your local government. We've talked tonight about this city council and the county commission. It's important for us to be represented by those people who are looking out for our well-being, and so make your vote count, make sure that you take people with you to vote, make sure that you make plans to vote. There's a chance you might be out of town, take advantage of the early voting opportunities. So if you haven't already registered, please do so, and then remember to vote. There is a need for two executive sessions this evening. If I can ask the city attorney to read, please.
Yes, the first motion would be to recess into executive session, not to exceed 40 minutes to discuss one or more matters involving legal risk to the city deemed privileged under the attorney-client privilege as allowed under KSA 754319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room in the Cyrus K. Holiday Building. The following staff will be necessary to assist the governing bodies in its deliberation, city attorney Stanley and other staff the governing body finds useful.
Okay, we've heard the need for the executive session. I move we go into executive session. Do I have a second? Second from Councilman Dobler. Let's get this vote first, please. Thank you. Okay. All those in favor recess into executive session, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Hey, okay.
Aye.
Thank you. We will recess into executive session after a 10-minute break. Thank you.
Yes, yep.
Okay, we have concluded our discussions during our first executive session. No action has been taken. There's a need for a second executive session. City Attorney, will you read, please?
The motion would be to recess into executive session, not to exceed one hour to discuss litigation or possible litigation in matters deemed privileged under the attorney-client privilege as allowed under KSA 754319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room in the Cyrus K. Holiday Building. The following staff will be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberation, city attorney Stanley and other staff the governing body finds useful.
Okay, thank you. We've heard the need for a second executive session. Is there a motion? Motion from Councilman Dobler to go into executive session. I'll second that motion. If the, if we're, let's see, I think we're going to corner him here, so that we can, if you, all those in favor going into executive session, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Aye.
No, our.
Okay, we will immediately recess into executive session.
Can somebody grab that door?
Okay.
You don't want to hear what I got to say. I wasn't invited to the court hearing. My city attorney didn't let me know who was talking and when it was. So I'm going to be quiet.
Okay, we have concluded our discussions in our second executive session. No decisions have been made, and there's no further business coming before this body. This meeting is adjourned.